Thanks.
Here we go.
This is the zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2014. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order, and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. The first item in the business meeting is finance report. Patty?
Sure. So I put the expense or cheap front. We probably won't have any in July and August phone bill. You get the postage meter payment we made back in August. Then you just go over to supplies, which is one, two, three, four columns over. That's what we use for WB Mason. When you go down to the bottom, we have 514-95. I'm leaving the 390 for the phone, because that's close to what it was last year. So that leaves us, if we need any supplies, which we will, because I'm going to need at least ink, 124-95. And anything that would go over that would come out of revolving. So that uses up our $860 expense line item. After that, I get the revolving account. Hasn't changed much, except for hours from last meeting. The application fee for tonight. I just listed some awaiting applications. I got one, two, three, four, five, six of them out there, just no one's come in with a complete.
These are pending applications.
Yeah, they have denials written on them.
What's the deadline? Because maybe we don't need a meeting in three weeks.
We probably, no, the deadline would be today, would have been.
So maybe we'll just skip that meeting of October 28th.
Exactly.
All right.
Then we move right to December.
And because we're within, we're actually within the 65 days we're allowed to open a hearing. So Monday was, I think, 64 days. So now we're past that. So we have, we can.
Oh, you mean for the December.
Right. Because we got November, the first week or two, first Tuesday, we always meet is election day. The following Tuesday is Veterans Day. That's why we met at the 28th last year when we voted on the meeting schedule.
Mm-hmm.
So I just listed what I have out there and what's, they'll probably all come in at once, they may not come in at all, because, I mean, I can sit and meet with someone for two hours and then they never come back.
Yeah.
It just depends.
That way you're talking them out of it.
You know? No, actually.
Well, that's because you're thorough.
And that's it with finance. The minutes, I didn't want to waste a tree.
Some of them like to approve those minutes for us for September 2nd?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of September 2nd, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There was no one recused on that one, or was there?
Nope, we were all here.
Well, that's the business, do we have to do, so that's business and?
Business, it's just all meetings for nine, too, because everybody was here, so I didn't have to separate anything more.
All right, great.
Okay. The next is the meeting schedule we usually do in October. Be, we do it in, no, we usually do it in October. Because of that 65-day period, if we don't meet, like example, we don't meet till December now, and someone comes in the middle of November, I need to have that January 6th date to put in the legal ad. So I just go through the whole year and I, so we, I have the first Tuesday for the year, so there's no elections next year. Check with town clerk that I know of.
Mm-hmm.
Because it's every other. Wait a minute, when's the next presidential?
Two years.
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So we're good. So if you want to vote on the meeting schedule for 2015?
Like to make a motion to accept the 20215 schedule?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Can I, do we need a motion to cancel the November 2015 meeting?
Yep, I can just, you can just tell me and.
Great.
I think we should cancel the November 2014 meeting, which is next month, unless.
She actually was on, was.
What was the date of that?
It was going to be October 28th.
It was going to be November, it was going to be election day.
Right, so she.
Right, and then the next one is?
She moved it forward into the end of October.
Right, because I couldn't move it to the second week, because it's Veterans Day.
So it's going to be October 28th?
Yes.
Yeah, and the deadlines passed for that anyway.
So we don't need to meet on the 28th? Okay.
Do we need a motion?
That's what I was just saying, no?
No.
No, okay.
I never did before.
Motion.
So just don't post it? Mm, it won't meet.
It's been posted.
You post it online or anything?
It's posted as business only, so.
Good to have me back as chairman, isn't it?
I just call and.
Absolutely, you're on top of it.
So I just, I just let Jan, I just let the town clerk know, she'll take care of it.
Chairman of the Year. That idea.
What other things we got?
Online, does that get, does that get noted online that we're not meeting? Just as a matter of record? I mean, if somebody, not that anybody generally.
I post agendas when we meet, I put the agendas up there, because I got, finally got.
I didn't know if like the online schedule happened.
Janet figured back me, there's only so many people that can post online.
Okay.
There's only so many spaces, so Janet put me on with someone else, so I can, I put the minutes up there, I put the, and contact information, all that. The selectmen are talking about doing an alternate.
That's what I was going to say, we're kind of into other, so I was going to ask about sort of the same topic. They were talking about posting meeting minutes online, right? Wouldn't that make things a little bit easier as far as not having to post them on the calendar, on the bulletin board?
Meeting minutes, we, we post, each department posts their own, but what they were talking about is an alternate, alternative way to post our, the agendas. Right now, the, right now, for me to do these meetings, I have to write them out on a meeting slip, go down to town clerk, and post it at least 48 hours ahead of time, which I do business way ahead of time, because of, I need it for the legal ad. She stamps it, there's a calendar on the wall outside the town clerk's office, she writes it on that calendar, it gets posted outside on the building.
On the bulletin board.
And then all she does is she goes on the town website homepage under meeting calendar, and she puts ZBA for that night, and when you click on it, all it says is third floor meeting room. Now, if the selectmen, they haven't adopted this yet, they're, it looks like they will, it'll all be just done online. You won't go down to post your meeting.
Right, it'll be posted on electronic bulletin board, basically.
It'll be done by email. So emailing the town clerk, and the only thing, the only, and then she'll have to respond to you, but you can't like go post it at five, five or four before she closes or.
Right.
So it's going to be, and then I think what they're looking to do is, when you click on that town calendar, and you click on ZBA, it'll give you our agenda, the agenda will pop up.
Good.
The only thing is our, what's, what's going to be a little funky with us is us and also the planning board, is we have to post a public hearing notice, which is what gets mailed to the abotters. That has to be posted per 48 in a conspicuous place in town hall, it specifically says in. So they're going to have to still post those somewhere, whether it be in the building, there's a bulletin board downstairs, there's still the bulletin board outside, and we can put them online, too.
Yeah.
But I called.
Well, I think putting them online is certainly a good idea.
I mean, I called Elaine at DHCD, and she's kind of couldn't, couldn't answer me, but she was like.
As far as whether you don't have to post them in town hall?
Well, I checked, you know, I checked with Janet Pantano, and she says, well, why don't you call state and see if maybe, because that 48 is dated 2000.
What's the question, whether you have to continue to post them in town hall?
Whether we can legally post a public hearing notice only online.
Oh, so, okay, but the worst case is you put it in town hall, but it's still online. You still put it online.
Yeah, it's just going to be an actual step for the town clerk. So she'll have to go in and do that later, but.
Doesn't sound like it's a big issue.
I think she's going to do that.
If it's set up properly.
Right. They're still working on it. So it's not set in stone or anything, it's just what they're working on.
How are they going to work the deadlines? Because it's, it's, it's a certain time ahead based on their part-time schedule, right?
It's going to be.
That's the part that concerns me, is how.
Yeah.
It's going to be a moving target, when, it's not like it's every seven days before. It's seven days before if they're in that day, or not on vacation, or not whatever.
Yeah, it's.
Somebody's going to have to figure it out.
I think they got a.
They try and drill down to get into the administrative details of who's responsible for what.
Yeah.
And how they're going to meet it. Is there a backup plan for somebody who's on vacation?
I hope so. Because it's crazy not to do this online.
Yeah.
It's crazy.
And all the stuff that's posted online, is that going to have to be backed up somewhere? Or they're going to keep hard copies like we've always done, right?
As far as I know, I don't think it's going, I don't know.
It's backed up online.
I don't know, I don't know how far.
You know, you're talking about some serious files over the course of.
Yeah.
Lifespan of your laptops.
Yeah, I just, I just saw them discussing it in a meeting. I don't know the specifics of who's doing what and when.
Mm-hmm.
But Janet let me know that I'll, I will still be doing things the way I do them, I can still post that meeting notice, because she, you know, said to me, you know, check with the state. So I called Elaine at DHCD, and she said, you know, 48 hasn't changed, it has to be posted in a conspicuous place in or on the building.
Well, in the building, doesn't have, doesn't specify that it has to be posted in a conspicuous place accessible 24 hours, or that's why we have the bulletin board outside?
That's what, that's what I remember.
That's my understanding.
That's what I remember.
When you look under.
You know, where, you know.
Find where it is. Notice of public hearing. And this is what I emailed to Elaine, D H C D, okay. In all cases where notice of public hearing is required, required, excuse me, notice shall be given by publication in newspaper of general circulation, city of town, two consecutive weeks. The first publication ought to be less than, okay, that's the legal ad, okay? And then by posting such notice in a conspicuous place in the city or town hall for a period of not less than 14 days before day of such hearing.
All right, so it does not have to be accessible to the bulletin board, actually.
But that's not the agenda, this is the public hearing notice. So they're looking at just the agendas, but I'm worried, I was worried about this, so.
So are.
You know, I, I talked to Elaine, and I asked her if, since this is from 2008, if any updates have been to, to this 48 in regard to this posting area?
Yep.
And she said no. It hasn't changed.
All right.
So we'll see. And actually, Phil Tripani had a cool idea, that they were talking about, like, I don't know whether we'd go outside the building, because it'd have to be waterproof, like a little, a computer that you can, touchscreen, kind of.
We can barely afford to keep the lights on, it'd be great, but.
I don't know, they would, they would bounce around some cool ideas.
I think it's a great idea.
With crayons.
Yeah.
Mike, Mike's, Mike's working on it.
All right.
Mike's pretty good at it, so I'm sure he'll take care of us. Okay, where am I? Anything else?
We are now correspondents, yes.
Okay. This is a notice of public hearing for the zoning board amendment, so, sorry, zoning amendments from the zoning board. They have a public hearing tomorrow night at 7:15. Excuse me. The microphone's going to pick you up. Thank you. Tomorrow night, and these are the proposed changes. That are Howard, I emailed them to you, I think, on, what did I write down?
I meant to, I meant to ask him a question about this and forgot, so maybe I'll email him.
Well, they have a hearing tomorrow night, I don't know if any of this has changed since September 16th.
Well, the only thing, the housing for elderly is taken out and not being put back in, is that intentional, or, do you know? I'm just curious, I can ask him.
There's no, I remember him saying there's no definition. The definition somehow either was never in the bylaw, or was taken out of the bylaw.
Oh, okay. Well, we can, I can tune into their hearing tomorrow night.
That, that might have changed, actually.
Well, I'm just, I think there are some, I see what he's saying. So he didn't add the definition in, because he's adding some definitions, but not that one. So I'll, I'll get a chance to watch their hearing tomorrow night and see if I can make his retails of it.
Yeah, it looks like that's, I think that's.
He does have, there is still nursing home in here, so maybe that's.
I can't believe pipe organ making's still in.
Maybe that covers it, but I'll send him an email tomorrow, just to ask.
Pipe organ making.
Yeah, because I'm not back, I'm not back until Thursday.
What's that?
I'm not back until Thursday.
That's fine, I'll, I'll get with Howard.
Okay, the next is Citizens Planner Training Collaborative, the Fall 2014 Workshops. Unfortunately, they're the same workshops that they always have.
Mm-hmm.
In Havrell, like, kind of, I kind of wish they would, like, there's a good one, but it's at Minnata's Vineyard. You know, one that you guys haven't been to or something, but.
Sounds like a road trip.
Yeah.
Overnight?
Mm-hmm.
Forty ams?
Sleepover.
So there's three of them, one in Lowell, but that's introductory to the zoning act with, which we have all the handouts, because Jeff, you went a couple times, Paul, you went, right?
Uh, Havrell, yeah, yep.
So if anybody else is interested, just let me know, and I can sign you up. The next item is a application came from conservation. It's for a construction attached deck to the rear of a single-family residence. So I just looked at the plan, which is the third page there, and as you can see, he just drew it on. This was before he, he hasn't done his final plan, I don't think. I just let Steve Podolsky know that as long as he's 10 feet from the rear, he's good, otherwise, you know, John would send him to us. That's it. And then under, if I can do this under other, because I got it late, after the packets were done, 70 West Main, Richfield is finally going to site plan review.
Harry had a question, I ran into him the other day.
So I gave Howard, Howard has the decision.
Is it complete? Because he asked me about a condition that seemed to be missing, condition three or something. Can you double-check the copy that maybe was distributed and just make sure it's complete?
Okay. Because I actually emailed.
I happened to bump into him the other night.
I emailed Howard three days ago and made sure you have the decision and you're all set.
Okay, well.
I didn't hear that, but I'll check.
He evidently reviewed it and had a question about whether or not, he said it seemed like there was one of the conditions was missing. So maybe it was just cut off or something, but if you.
Actually, actually read it two days ago, and didn't see anything wrong. I didn't say that it said they needed to go to site plan review, but I'll check.
As I recall, I think he said, what is condition three? I don't remember, because that was a while ago. He says it's missing from whatever he has. So as long as Howard has it, I'm sure he'll get it.
And I don't have it on this laptop, so.
Okay.
I can't look.
Just make a note, that would be.
Okay. And other than that, the only other thing I wanted to say, when we're, when we're done at the end of the night with hearings and stuff, I know we, we've always just, you know, closed a hearing. I think we should make a motion to adjourn, so she knows we're done. Because you know how we're always yelling that we're done? And we, I think we used to do it, but that was 14 years ago, I don't remember.
Close the meeting and then adjourn as, yeah.
And then adjourn for the night. Because you got to close the business and then close the hearing, but just adjourn in general.
Okay.
Just to, this way Christine knows when to shut off the camera.
What is this, so, item four, public comment?
Uh, I, that was a suggestion from town administrator, because when we had Alan Olson, who wanted to come in and talk about the open house downtown.
That would be more like as it arises?
Yeah, I think there's going to be different wording he, he wants it to be, but we didn't have anything on the public comment. And ask Gina if that's what she wanted it to say, she should just put it as that until we hear from.
Okay.
From Mike, tell you something different.
Okay.
And that's it. I'm good.
Great. Someone like to make a motion to close the business meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to close the business meeting of Tuesday, October 7th, 2014.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And, oh, good, we can go kick right into the, yeah. We're going to go ahead and open this hearing, so whoever's going to present to us, that'd be great, and once he's presented, any public interest or comments could be, could be made at that time, too. So just give me a chance, I'll, I'll get the hearing open, but you're all set, sit down.
If anybody wants to sign in who's here at Carlton Drive, that's the hearing tonight. Just if you can put your, oh, I didn't give you a time.
Very communicative.
We are opening the hearing for 4 Carlton Drive. The Board of Appeals will conduct this meeting according to the rules laid out in Chapter 48 of the General Laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Robert's Rules of Order and its own particular set of rules entitled Rules of Procedure, copy of which is on file with the town clerk. Any copy, another copy is available from the clerk at this meeting. This meeting is being taped recorded for the purpose of taking minutes. Once the minutes are approved, the tape may be taped over. Excuse me.
Legal notice, Town of Georgetown, Zoning Board of Appeals, 4 Carlton Drive, special permit request. The public hearing will be held on October 7th, 2014, at 7:30 PM at Georgetown Hall, third floor meeting room, at, for an application filed by Barry M. Enos, Carlton Realty Trust, LLC, Georgetown, Mass, for the property located at 4 Carlton Drive, Georgetown, Mass. Assesses map 15 lot 44 in the IB zone. The applicant owner requires a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals to operate a martial arts school, private educational use, which requires a special permit in the industrial B district under the Georgetown bylaws, Chapter 2, use schedule, and Chapter 165-9, 78, and 79, and pursuant to MGL, Chapter 48, Section 9 of the State Code, ZBA File Number 1503.
Thanks, Dave. I think we're going to recess for just a minute while Paul's got a little coughing that we want to work through, so.
It's a swat for you.
It's not very...
I don't know if everybody has it, is that what you're talking about?
Actually, that's my map, it's not a very good picture.
Okay, we're back on. So, um, we're gonna start by introducing the members of the board. Uh, this is Sharon Freeman, I'm Jeff Moore, Paul Schellen, and Dave Kaptus, and we're gonna be the sitting members tonight. And we do have, uh, a four-member board tonight, so, uh, just so you're aware, the decision has got to be a special permit, right? So, this does need to be unanimous vote. Uh, generally, we have a short board. Depending on how the hearing goes prior to voting, uh, we would generally kinda get an idea of where people stand, and if there's an issue, somebody wants to, uh, you know, discuss further or is not ready to vote, we'd give you the opportunity to, to continue the hearing or perhaps, um, you know, withdraw if that be the case. But anyway, just so you know, you do need a unanimous vote. We've read the legal notice, so why don't you go ahead with your application, introduce yourself, and tell us what's, uh, what's going on over here at Carlton Drive.
With the maps that are there, the existing building, they're about ten years. And the plan on the right is the one that was, uh, which was the board ten years ago to get the approval. And in a, a certain part of that building, this is part of your, your plan, there's that drawing.
We have this.
Yeah, and then we have some drawings.
I think we have this.
Yep, yep, yep.
We have that.
What we're doing, what we're, uh, proposing is taking a pretty much from the window in the middle down to the right, portion of space, and there's a mezzanine there that's forty feet wide, which is about forty feet, and finish that such that in martial arts studio, during the downtown, we use the space. And go from that window down to here, second floor.
And take out the windows?
No.
No.
But that's the area. No, it's, it's, uh, the first floor is manufacturing, and then underneath the mezzanine is washroom, stockroom, maintenance room.
So, you're not changing the building itself?
Not at all.
But that's the area that we took off.
Will there be? No, no signage, no additional lighting?
There's gonna be lighting in the front of the, the front of the building, one toward the building, 'cause there's a, there's a walkway. The entrance way will be the middle of the building, and the parking will be on the right-hand side. And there'll be lighting such that the walkway is illuminated.
Is it currently?
No.
Alright, so, is the walk, does the walkway exist?
Yes, the walkway is four-foot wide concrete.
Okay, so, you're gonna...
Parking lot goes around to the front of it.
You'll have some low-profile lighting?
Uh, it's probably gonna be, uh, um, low, low voltage lighting, um, and just basically looking to illuminate that area.
Okay, and what about a...
It's not gonna be up, and it's not gonna be...
What about a sign?
There'll be a sign, a sign in the middle. It says MJ Industries, and, uh, space available, and we'll take the space available and put in...
Yep. There's an actual sign in front, a freestanding sign in front of the building.
Does it get the pylon sign, like that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Do we have? Do we have anything on the sign as far as size, or...
As long as he conforms to the bylaw. As long as he conforms to the bylaw. In all regards.
We've had our sign issues.
Absolutely. No, but that's, uh...
And will the sign be illuminated?
The sign will not be...
Not allowed, so...
Well, let's put it this way, it's not illuminated now, but it could be if you, if it was required.
I'm sorry, Jack, could you speak up a little bit? I'm a little hard of hearing.
Yeah. It could be illuminated if it was required.
It's actually not.
But that's the sign right there.
See the building inspector if he wanted to illuminate something.
Right.
Got it. Get the same photo.
Same photo.
Yeah, okay. Um, well, I'm sure we have a few other questions.
I'm sure.
Um, but while we're pondering that, is there anybody from the audience that wants to, uh, has any... Are, are you, you wanna continue with your presentation? Why don't you continue with a few more?
This is what the area that's been finished out. You can pass those around. There's a waiting area, right over the front window.
That's okay.
And the last thing, one question will be parking in the entire right-hand side of the building. I believe there are... Twenty-four spaces here, including three handicap spots. And this would be the walkway, and then the emergency exit or another exit is right here.
Does the walkway wrap around the building? Is it, is that what that shows? It looks like it's supposed to, and it does. Wraps all the way around.
Comes to the front door, doesn't go beyond.
Does it go in front of the parking spaces?
Uh, no, well, no, it starts at the, right at the corner here. Comes from pavement onto the walkway.
Okay, so the, the, the walkway that's shown on this plan doesn't actually exist?
Very close.
And maybe I misread it, but it looked to me like there's a sidewalk between the parking spaces and the building itself.
I'll be honest with you, that line that looks like the sidewalk is actually a, a contour line at ninety-four feet. But that's pretty much where the walkway is. Need to walk, right?
Okay.
And, let's see. The last thing is that, uh, drop-off and pick-up of children would be on a driveway on a quiet road. We're, right now, live in the middle of town. And parking is adequate here. Our factories go home right now at, uh, at four-thirty. These people don't start their program until five o'clock.
The hours of operation would be what?
Five o'clock tomorrow, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at nine till two.
I'm sorry, can I get your name and address?
Eric Jackson.
Jackson?
Yes.
And your address?
Um, seventy-six Farrwood Drive.
I'm sorry?
At Farrwood Drive, F-A-R-R-W-O-O-D Drive, and that's in Bradford.
Thank you.
He would be the tenant for attached martial arts.
Do you think over time those hours might change, though?
Um...
Earlier...
No, uh, right now, um, I don't see it as, it's changing that much. If anything, I would move it to four, but I don't really see that happening for a long time. Or I, my, I have two children at home and my wife, that, I, I have the, have child care at each time, and it's not possibly happen for another, which is eight years, ten years down the road.
'Cause we usually condition the hours of operation, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, it just, if it were put in there, five to whatever,
Yes.
that's what it is, and you'd have to come back.
I'd probably have it, rather have it put in at four.
That's what, that's kinda what I'm getting at.
Yeah, if we had four in there, it'd be better.
And will that interfere with the folks leaving? But they probably park elsewhere, right?
The employees park in the rear.
In the rear?
And the doors that they're gonna be using, um, the employees and the, and the students can't interact the way the doors are set up.
So, the front door is delineated between the two uses, is that right? So, you don't, you've got...
The front door would be only martial arts.
Right.
And to get into the other parts, you'd need a key.
Okay, so you're not gonna have employees or customers of the the tenants, the manufacturing tenants going in and out the front door?
No. Well, they won't be running into each other on the corridors.
Do you foresee any changes in hours, say, for special events, like promotions, uh...
All my promotions are done on Saturday, normally when I normally have classes.
Mm-hmm.
So that I, I usually cancel my classes on Saturday and do promotions and events during those times.
And Saturday was nine to two?
Nine to two.
Nine to two? Does, I mean, I, I think that's very reasonable.
Yes.
But I don't know if you're, might be handcuffing yourself a little bit, saying, "I have to be finished by two." Okay? You know, if you have some special event, you have some guests, you have a lot of demonstrations, you have all family and friends, just letting, you know, have a little experience in this area.
Nine to five, then just a...
If it were me, I would, because I don't think that would interfere with anything else you're trying to do.
You could go nine to five Saturday, Sunday, in case you wanna be in there Sunday unless there's some reason why.
Right.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean...
The factory, manufacturing-wise is closed.
Correct.
That one isn't the one that's...
Doesn't interfere with that at all, but, you know, I, I hate to have to see them have to come back and say, "I made a mistake, can I change the hours again and go through the process again," to try and have some forward thinking. Uh, 'cause I've been at them, and they take all day.
The current, the concern I have as far as the hours, since we're talking about the hours of operation, is the, is the parking overlap. So, um, I'm assuming you're gonna want your customers, the students, parents parking, uh, along the building.
That's correct. That's reserved for the...
Uh, if you start earlier than five, I don't know who's gonna be parking there. Do you plan to delineate that parking with some signage somehow specifically, so that those, you don't... What I would not like to see happen is people come in, those dots are, those spots are full at four o'clock, they start parking around the back and have to look the way around if there's trucks coming and going.
My employees, and my employees are pa- are parking in the very, the building. My employees park in the location. This is where we're going by, is room for two lanes, so it's only four-foot wide.
Mm-hmm.
Upside of the parking, paved.
Do you have a loading dock back there and so forth?
Yeah, it's a loading dock.
Yeah, so you've got some trucks coming in there?
They're not, yeah.
I mean, from time to time?
Not that late, but we do have trucks coming in there.
Yeah, but, yeah, so, you know, truck pickups can tend to be four- clockish.
Yeah.
Often times. I mean, I do the same thing, they always come at as late as they possibly can. So, I, uh, I think it's important that whatever time they wanna start, those spots be available for them.
Those spots will always be available, no one else is gonna...
So, they should be delineated, I think, somehow, with signage or whatever's necessary to make sure that...
Okay.
Uh, and I don't know, how many spots are required for the, for the studio? To, on a typical basis, I mean?
This, this lot, I believe, has...
You're gonna get more than you have downtown, I can tell you that. Are you moving from downtown?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, you got like none downtown.
There's no parking spots downtown.
No, it's just a, it's sort of a safety thing. I mean, if, you know, you're asking, you're asking for, uh, a, a use in an otherwise industrial, so we have to be concerned with how the traffic is gonna flow and how people are gonna flow safely.
This lot has seventy-one parking spots available on it.
This one does, yeah.
In total?
And how many do you need to, if you're gonna have a class?
How many do I need technically?
Yeah, if you have a class, a typical class that starts, I mean, I don't know how many students in a class, but...
Uh, an average of class during the daytime during the first, before seven o'clock, is usually looking at like six to eight students. So, I mean, that's, you know, one car, not even one car per person, 'cause sometimes they carpool, and sometimes they're brothers and sisters, or brothers to brothers. So, you're looking at maybe five to six cars during that point in time. Seven o'clock, different story, my teenage classes is generally bigger, so I average between about fifteen students in that class. So, you're looking at about fifteen cars coming in. Most teenagers get dropped off versus parents stay, some parents stay. It's about half and half right now.
How many, uh, spots did you say were gonna be designated?
Twenty-four.
Exclusive twenty-four spots?
Yes.
For these guys?
That's correct.
Are there, is that, is that, I might have missed, is that a, is that a spot on the side of the building?
Yes, that's, uh...
So, those, those are twenty-four spots?
Yeah, I tried counting those, I couldn't count them.
Twenty-four, can't remember where they're going to, to the back of the building, to the front.
Okay. So, those spots are gonna be delineated for them?
That's correct.
And...
At all times.
And how, uh, do you have a, a problem with any kind of signage to make sure that those are available?
We can put up a sign specific for them. We have obviously just handicap signs, we have, uh...
Right, you got the first two or three that are handicapped.
Um, we can put up a sign reserved, um, reserved for his name or reserved...
I mean, it might not be necessary, given the nature of the business, but commercial property can tend to flip. I know there's no intention, but it can tend to flip. We'll just move on to the other part of the building, maybe in the future, right? So, you may, right now, the parking may not be an issue, but
Yeah.
somebody who moves in that has a lot of employees, all of a sudden, they're all bucking for the great spots along, you know, close to the door or whatever it is, so I don't know what's gonna go on.
My employees just to park out there, but we moved them back.
Sure.
That back row of spots will hold all the employees, the maximum I've ever had, not now, but that I've ever had there. And then there's two more rows closer to the building that could also be, uh, set up for them to, employees.
Is there existing lighting now at those twenty-four spots? Because you don't use them now at night.
There's side, there's side lighting on the building, on the side. It's good lighting in the back, there's two tower lights as well that have been there. Um, they run a timer, I went down tonight to check them out, and they weren't running.
Only function? Oh, you're, alright, so you will, you do have lighting, but you'll just have to adjust the time, the timer's on.
We do have lighting, three sides of the building, and the front with the perk and the street. That's where we're gonna add some low-voltage lighting in the ground going toward the, front of the building.
Do you have to retrofit more additional plumbing? And is your septic big enough to?
Uh, septic is big enough. We did, uh, add two handicap bathrooms on the second floor. I think those bitches are going around. And, uh, we, yeah, two handicap bathrooms were added on the second floor.
You don't need showers or anything like that?
No.
Yeah, where this is a change of use, you're only coming to us, is, they're, they're not going to site plan review, obviously, for any reason, 'cause they're not doing any...
Not that I know of.
No.
Usually, this kind of stuff would be handled by the, by the planning board during a site plan review, but because this is simply a change of use, you know, we're kind of
It's not...
Falling into that. A lot of this stuff is falling into the category of more site plan, if you're developing this beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't see any of the change, I didn't see...
You're not doing, you're not doing any, uh, development outside, they're just...
No, there's no exterior operations.
Doing so, it's kinda triggering. Alright. Well, while we're pondering that, is there anyone from the, anyone else from the audience who, yeah, if you want us to stand up, introduce yourself and, uh, if you have any comments?
Um, Joe Tirone, I live on Two Carlton Drive. I'm the only house on this...
Can you spell the last name, please?
T-I-R-O-N-E. I'm, um, the only residential house on the street. So, every vehicle that drives by has gotta go by my house down the bar of my driveway. I don't see anything wrong with this at all. I think that it's a great thing, if it's gonna be a place for kids to go. And, um, you know, after Barry's business closes down, you know, it's pretty much quiet the whole street, you know, there's nobody there. And if there's gonna be kids, and there's gonna be something for the town, and another place for them to go and keep them out of trouble, I have no problems with it. And, uh, he keeps the street clean, never have any problems on that street, so... That's all I'd like to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I actually thought you were gonna be on the other side of the fence.
Well, I mean, anything for the kids, I mean...
No, you're right, we agree.
Is there anybody else from the audience? We have a few other folks, are you all with the?
Just in support.
Okay. You, you have an opportunity, if you want to, to, uh, say anything that's on your mind. Um...
I mean, as I, as I review the requirements, to me, they're meeting one sixty-five seventy-nine, requested use is essentially desirable to the public convenience. Uh, they're not gonna overlord, um, water municipal systems. Uh, it's not gonna impair the integrity of the character of the neighborhood, that's for sure, 'cause it's already industrial, and, uh, it's not in excess of, take it loose, that could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood.
So, I think we've, we have identified, at least to this point, a few concerns that would, we would probably wanna put some conditions in here. One being the hours of operation. Five to nine P.M., Monday through Friday, and nine to five Saturday, Sunday.
Four to...
Four to nine during the week, Monday through... Oh, four to nine, four to nine, excuse me, yeah, four to nine.
Four to nine Monday to Friday, and then nine to five Saturday?
And...
And Sunday?
We should include Sunday.
Friday, yeah, Saturday and Sunday as well.
Definitely, it's a family day.
Yes.
Oh, Friday and, oh, Saturday and Sunday.
I add it Sunday, I just, I know what happened.
I should.
You're gonna have something special going on on a Sunday, you don't wanna be prohibited from being able to go in there. Four to nine? Okay, I'm just gonna take some notes here, we have to add some conditions here, so...
Good question, Jack, you got handicap bathrooms on the second floor?
We do.
Are there elevators?
No. They're still a requirement.
Pardon me?
It's still a requirement, you have to, any new bathroom today has to be handicap.
How do you get on the second floor?
Well, handicap could be somebody with a cane, and also a wheelchair.
No, it's not, it's, I'm just asking out of my own curiosity.
I know, well, I asked the same question.
I'll give the ADA complaint, somebody in a wheelchair.
Some of which...
But I guess it's, it's, uh, it's a requirement today, you can't do anything less than a handicap bathroom.
Yeah, well, yeah.
So, you want a handicap bathroom, that's what they, what I gave them.
You said there are twenty-four spots on the side, three of which are handicapped?
Yes.
Is that correct? Yeah.
So, handicap would be for anybody in the building, I, I assume?
Handicap would be, uh...
Any, anybody that would be using that building
And employee...
That requires a handicap spot would use it, but the other twenty...
Still allows them twenty-one spots, yeah.
Still, the twenty-one, I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna delineate the handicap spots to, to them specifically, although you may have people using them. I'm just suggesting that we require you to allocate, uh, twenty-one, the twenty-one parking spots on the side of the building specifically to, uh, the tenant with signage delineating, delineating their use and making sure it's available
Yes.
during their operating hours.
Okay.
And so, whatever...
That's a real good point.
Whatever, whatever works.
Okay, we'll do that.
The extent there's any issues, you'll have to come up with something else. You know, if you find that people are coming in, those spots are being taken, you're gonna have to do something to make sure that they're available.
Yeah.
Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah, not a problem either. I'm difficult.
The lighting on the walkway, right?
Except I gotta write down what I just said. What did I just say?
Twenty-one spots delineated.
Yeah.
What are you manufacturing next door?
Uh, we make library shelving. Uh, we made the shelving for the Georgetown library. And, uh, you know, we have different styles, but it's all library-related.
What side of the building is that? Is that, uh, where the parking spots are? Would you call that, uh, east, maybe?
I would call it east.
We'll call it east, alright? Martial arts facility, right?
Mm-hmm.
Studio?
Martial arts studio.
It's, it's...
International?
Martial arts school.
I think it's technically International Martial Arts Academy, correct?
Uh, International Martial Arts, Inc.
Inc, okay, so the form book is wrong.
Well, in our application, or in the, uh, ad, we're calling it martial arts school, so it's just a matter of use, it doesn't have to be the actual name, so that's fine.
Actually, with the, the new form book, I...
So, lighting?
Yeah, existing, uh, low-voltage lighting to illuminate the sidewalk going around the building in front of the, for the parking area, all the way to the entrance.
It's not existing now, though, right?
No, but I've had to be going there, give me advice.
Should be maintained?
Yep.
I mean, the whole concept changes once you have nighttime now.
Right.
The appropriate lighting?
Yes, we maintain on, on pedestrian throughway, pedestrian access.
And I'm not sure, did you say that the current sign is currently illuminated?
It's not.
And is there a plan to do something there?
We didn't plan to light it. Um, if the board wanted to have it lit, we could.
We're more concerned with the safety factor of
The people.
Coming in and out of the cars and having an illuminated walkway.
Right, they will have, they will definitely have that.
I think with a illuminated sign, I don't know that that would've, would we have had to approve that?
Uh, I don't think it's allowed.
Yeah, you gotta...
You, you would have to delineate exactly what you're gonna do, and we'd have to...
Yeah.
If, if you need it illuminated, they could, you could come back and modify the permit or...
I think they'll be able, they'll be able to find it. I think they'll be able, they'll be able to find it.
Different under I B.
Yeah, you, you gotta meet the bylaw and we can help you with that.
It's a destination.
Right.
It's not, I want the sign caught my eye.
You don't have to put anything in about the front door only being used by them, do we? Should we?
Sounds like it's not gonna be accessible to any other part of the building.
I don't think so.
They'll probably have a sign on the door or something. Might put a sign on the door.
I mean, definitely a sign on the door.
Absolutely.
The term of the special permit. Do you have a lease or pending lease?
Uh, I have a lease with, with him at this time, pending, pending a couple of conditions.
I'm sure, uh, this being one of them. I'm, I'm just wondering about the term of the, the term of the permit. It's not gonna be indefinite or necessarily for his use, but as long as he's got an active lease for this type of use.
Well, we're.
As soon as, and I don't, you know, you might, you might potentially change.
Well, my thoughts are, once he has a business in there operating, I intend, you know, I would obviously intend to renew a lease.
Right.
But to come down and have to get.
Same.
To be, I'm not sure.
We would be.
Not sure what you're looking for.
I, I think once the, uh, once the space is no longer being used.
If it was.
Purpose.
Right. If he was to leave and we wanted to bring another commercial use, then I fully expect I'd be back on the board.
Right.
But this, we want this special permit to expire, is what I'm getting at, when.
It's private educational.
At some point in the future, this tenant gone, or another one of the exact similar use doesn't replace them at some point.
You could have. You could have that the special permit expires upon the vacation of space by.
That would be fine.
International Martial Arts.
And if John, if, if something else were to go in there, they'd have to go, he'd have to go to John and John would have to look in the use schedule. It might be a permitted use.
On the private educational.
Because it's industrial in the right now.
I'm talking, yeah, I'm just saying, this special permit that we would potentially approve for them is for this use.
Yeah.
Under these conditions.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't go to the.
It should expire if they vacate the building.
Right.
That's all I'm getting at.
Great.
Any other use you have needs a special permit anyway or not. It may be in allowed use, it may be.
Right.
It may be very, you know, who knows? But if you, they move out, some other use moves in and this thing sits out there, it, it needs to, if someone's gonna, down the road, come back in, it, we like to have them sit through and have this discussion so that everybody understands what the expectations are. That's, that's it.
Yeah, that's fine.
That makes sense, so. Does that, I don't know, does that make sense? I'm just saying it shall expire if the martial arts tenant vacates the premises. For more than three months or something like that. I don't know.
Oh, vacates is pretty clear.
That's fine. Okay. What else? Anything else? Do we need the plans, Patty? There aren't any specific plans for the use.
Yeah, we don't really.
I don't know that we really need them.
I haven't, I always do that.
The only thing we're referencing is parking spots on the north side of the building, but I think that's pretty clear, but.
You wanna just reference, you wanna reference that one?
Yeah, but it's not on here. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if we need to, to reference the plans because.
If, if we don't, if it's not on the plans, as long as we make sure we reference it.
The parking spots are on that plan.
Motion? The only thing that's not there would be the lighting.
Tried to read this one.
We do have the parking spots.
Yeah, I mean.
Except now we're delineating twenty-one and keeping the three handicap separate, right?
You can see them better on the bigger, on that plan, on the full size twenty-four by thirty-six. You can see it a lot better.
Do you wanna, you wanna include that? Larger one as exhibit A?
Yeah, the registry won't stamp that.
Want this one?
This one's fine.
It won't hurt at all.
Yeah, that one can go with the decision in the town clerk. Actually, the registry's not stamping any of our plans of that.
So, we'll call this what, exhibit A?
Models.
Unless they're my laws. Unless they're my laws. I just found that out.
Bear with me for a minute, will we?
How's the school doing downtown? You just outgrowing the space?
Um, I'm growing out of the space.
Big time, huh?
Especially my teenage class, you can tell. It's pretty crowded.
Are you a student? Is your injury from the class?
Yes. I'll put a better story.
Sorry to embarrass you. Just teasing you.
Just bear with me for just a second.
When I went back after being out of it for a few years, because I wanted my son to get back into it.
Oh, yeah?
When he was little.
Yeah.
So, I had to go watch a class and they had the parents, father and son, mothers, daughters, mothers, sons and all that stuff. Some weren't, and he wouldn't let me sign my son up. He's still gotta come watch. I'm watching him going off, boy, if I'm gonna bring him, might as well get back in and wait.
Sure, that's very adequate.
Do those classes?
Twenty-five years ago.
I just took.
Paying for it now.
All right, anything else to think of?
I can't think of anything.
Hours, um.
Marking that name.
Twenty-one parking spaces.
Walkway illumination?
Uh, appropriate lighting shall be maintained along the parking area. Appropriate outdoor lighting shall be maintained along the parking area and on the front of the building. Uh, should be more detailed than that?
I don't think so. That sounds good to me.
It's gonna be in their best interest anyways.
Well, could we add in, they need to, uh, condition a has been class?
I guess I'm chairman, right?
I don't know. Is he chairman now?
Yes, I put him as chairman.
So, you need to do this.
Yep, yep, yep.
Oh, no. What? He's gonna start coughing.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
Okay?
Yeah.
I'm worried about Paul.
Need to get mass. Is it all for that viral virus thing that's going on out?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That thing that's hitting kids. Isn't that weird?
Yep, yep, yep. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Parking spaces along the east.
Yep, I got it.
The building will be reserved and delineated with signage for the martial arts school.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, outdoor.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, I move to grant Barry M. Enos Carlton Realty Trust LLC Georgetown, Mass. For the property located at four Carlton Drive, Georgetown, Mass, assessors map fifteen lot forty-four and further delineated as exhibit A, special permit to operate a martial arts school. Private educational use in the industrial B zone pursuant to the Georgetown bylaws, chapter one sixty-five, nine, seventy-eight and seventy-nine and MGL, chapter forty-eight, section nine of the state code. I further move that the board found the application meets Georgetown zoning bylaw, chapter one sixty-five dash seventy-nine, A through D. Specifically, the application is desirable to the public convenience or welfare. Uh, number two, will not overload any public water or other municipal services so as to unduly subject area to hazards affecting health, safety or the general wel- welfare. Will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts. Will not cause an access, uh, an excess of that particular use which could be detrimental to the character of the neighborhood. With the following conditions. The hour of operation shall be limited to four P M to nine P M, Monday through Friday, nine A M to five P M, Saturday and Sunday. The twenty-one parking spaces along the east side of the building shall be reserved and delineated with signage for the martial arts school use. Appropriate outdoor lighting shall be maintained along the park, parking area and on the front of the building. The special permit shall also expire if the martial arts tenant vacates the premises. That's it?
That's it. I have a motion on the floors. Do I hear a second? Sharon, you got that?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded. Uh, is there any board discussion on this?
Nope, clear.
Did you mark the plan in there somewhere that I missed?
I did, yep. Exhibit A.
I think you put it in the text of the.
We put it in the text of, you put it in the text of his motion.
Okay.
Right. Yes, I did.
As further delineated as exhibit, and further delineated as exhibit A.
After, where did you put it after?
Lot forty-four.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion about this before we move?
No.
Okay.
Do you folks have any, anything further to add?
Okay. Sharon?
Uh, yes, I vote yes.
Dave?
Aye.
Paul?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so your special permit is granted.
Thank you.
Welcome. Let me just. Uh, let me just read the following. Uh, lapse of special permit per Mass General Law, chapter forty, A, section nine. Special permit shall lapse within a specified period of time, not more than two years, which shall not include such time required to pursue or await determination of an appeal referred to in section seventeen. If its essential use thereof has not sooner commenced except for good cause or in the case of permit for construction, if construction is not begun by such date, except for good cause. So, there's an, there's a lapse of permit, but. Do you intend, when do they intend to occupy the building, I guess?
Well, uh, he has a reserve now, but he has a lease to work out. He has to get, uh, his current. I guess his landlord has to find someone to replace his space and let him out early. Otherwise.
So, it won't be more than a year or six months or something like that?
Um, no, actually, the latest I would occupy would be, uh, basically September first of next year. It'd be, uh, August thirty-first to end my lease term.
Okay. Uh, just because, if you have any questions about the lapse. If, if, if it comes up, then you can ask Patty.
Yeah, you have two years.
Two years, okay.
But if it comes up down the road and you guys kind of forget, you might want to double check with her and she can, she can make sure you're aware of it, okay?
Did you read the appeal plan?
Uh, oh. Where is it? It's not on here. I thought that's what I was.
No, you won't.
Yeah, right here. Twenty day.
Oh, sorry, yeah, and there's a twenty day appeal period. Following fourteen days, the clerk has to file written decision with the town clerk. A person who exercises rights under an appealed special permit or variance does so at their own risk, so. You got thirty day appeal period. If you were to occupy that with before thirty days, you'd do so at your own risk, but it doesn't sound like that's gonna be an issue, so.
I'd like to make a motion to close this hearing.
Second.
All right, the motion to close and the seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sharon.
And I bought a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cut the video, we're all set. Thank you.
Great.